All right, call to order, the Gladstone Planning Commission, 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Today is 20 August 2019. It's 6:31 PM. And we'll call to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wentz? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual will be with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, not now.
You said what now?
Later.
She did actually say that she would.
I'm going to read the agenda if you don't have a copy of it. And if you're going to speak or you want to testify, we have cards to fill out that are in the back or on the table over here. The agenda tonight is first of all going to be the consent agenda, which is approval of the 2019 June 18 meeting. We did not have a meeting in July. And then we'll go to the regular agenda, which will be the planning report for June and July 2019. And the third item is discussion of a request for a route change bus stop for the new Civic Building at 18505 Portland Avenue. And that'll be Tom Mills from Trimat. And then we'll have a public hearing, which is item number four, which is Z0311-19-D for a design review. And then after the public hearing, we'll have business from the audience. And that's another opportunity for the public to speak about whatever you want, as far as I'm concerned. You have three minutes if you want to do that. And then we'll have business from the Planning Commission. And then it says information only update on changes to extension compliance, time limits in the city of Gladstone Municipal Code. And that's like tonight when we do our public hearing, there'll be, if it's approved for the quasi judicial hearing, it'll be a one-year use. And that's this information only thing pertains to that, and then we'll adjourn. So, the consent agenda, let's start there. Does anybody have any adds, moves, changes to the consent agenda? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Poole, Natalie Smith. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None opposed. Monthly planning report.
Thank you. So we have two months to go over. I'll be brief. We had quite a few building permits that came through. One was the Civic Center, which is obviously under construction now. We had some tenant improvements on Portland Ave. We're seeing some activity there. In July, we had some residential building permit work and then cell tower upgrades. The only Planning Commission action was the children's course clubhouse expansion. And we've seen pretty regular customer contacts with an uptick in June continuing a bit through July. So that's pretty normal from what we saw last year.
So, and you got that many phone calls? That big of an increase in phone calls last year at this time? What are they about?
I, it, I don't know if it was exactly the same, but it was, we saw an incre- a similar increase around the same time period. I think because it's the construction season.
Okay.
We get a lot of calls about, what's my setback? Or, I'm trying to pour my foundation right now. Where can I put my shed? Things like that.
Yeah, called.
Do you know what kind of upgrades were the, on the cell tower?
It was in-kind replacement of electrical cell tower equipment. It wasn't increasing the height or doing any work on the ground. So it was consistent with a previously approved conditional use permit.
So I have a question about on Webster Road, the old senior center slash rehab, that one level structure across from the water tower. What's going on with that? It sounded like they were all ready to go to planning on that, and it just kind of disappeared.
So you're talking about the multifamily residential?
Yeah, it was most recently used as a rehab center.
Oh, the one for the teen rehabilitation?
Before that, it was Glen Gladstone Rehabilitation.
Right, so it's county owned now. There was a property transfer going on. They are doing outreach right now. They're gearing up to do outreach with the community to make sure that everyone's informed in the neighborhood about what their proposal is. It's my understanding they're going to come in in the next few months potentially with the actual application. It would be a conditional use and a similar use determination land use approval that would come before you.
Okay, good.
But there's nothing pending, there's nothing submitted, and we don't have a timeframe. So I didn't put that on here yet.
Is this the, when I see the contact, it's under Cascadia Planning?
Yeah, that is for the multifamily apartment complex that's on the church property.
Okay.
They have changed their proposal to now not be a separate apartment unit, but to just be support services for the existing apartment building that's on the adjacent property.
Okay.
So we're working through options with them on that.
Did we ever?
Nothing active though.
Did we ever get any resolution on Carr's Planet Landscaping?
We anticipate that will be coming forward in October to you. They have submitted a landscape plan.
Good.
With their current landscaping shown on there of what they have installed. And so we will be going over the kind of what was approved and then what they've constructed and the difference, and hopefully getting that through a designer view process. But it just came in kind of as complete recently, so we're still reviewing it.
Good. I'm glad we're moving forward.
Yeah. And then a couple other updates on our end. Joy Fields is our new planner, senior planner at the county. She comes to us with many years of experience in planning. She is going to be taking over for me while I'm out on maternity leave. And so she's getting up to speed with everything very quickly, I may add. And she wanted to say just a couple sentences to introduce herself too.
Hello. I have about 10 years of experience. I worked with 19 local governments in the Piedmont of North Carolina, providing long range planning and technical assistance to the local governments. And then I moved to Transylvania County, North Carolina, and became the planner for the county in a small department. So I did a range of things from subdivision review to cell towers to any, anything that came through the office. And I started here mid-July. And I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Definitely, welcome.
We're glad you're here.
Thanks, Joy.
And one last thing, I passed out a handout we just received this afternoon from DLCD for housing bill 2001. It goes over some key dates in there. As you'll see, their model code is not expected to be released till December 31, 2020. It's our understanding that until this date on here of June 20th, 2022, that the city would not be forced to implement any of the model code. Ideally, what the state, what the bill's geared to do is encourage local governments to adopt their own ordinance update to reflect the bill before that timeline.
2021 for us though, right?
2022.
That's for large cities first.
So you would be within the Portland metro boundary though? So I believe you would fall within large cities, but that's something.
We're all in that same UGB metro type.
Right.
According to the training we had today, they said no, it would be June 20, 21.
Well, you know, I was thinking about that during that training we had, and then they did say metro, small cities are metro. And I was thinking about that, but I didn't question it, I probably should have.
Well, at the last meeting, the reason I'm interrupting there, but they, this just happened to come up, and it was our city attorney, when I mentioned that, you know, cities of under 25,000, or whatever the number was in population, it wouldn't apply. And he said, no, you're in the metro, so.
Correct. So you'll see there.
I was just making sure that's what I was hearing.
You'll see there under large cities, it says all cities within the Portland metro boundary with a population of more than 1,000. And again, it's up to DLCD and the state to clarify this, but that's what I'm interpreting from their summary they've sent out. So you'll see in there, it says duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes. That's their middle housing requirement. So that's all coming down the pipeline. This is just kind of gives you an idea of dates to look out for.
I just think single family to quad is going to be a big, big change for the community.
Just on the horizon, wanted to loop you in. We wouldn't be involved in any of the long range planning for this, but I thought I would share that information with you if you're in the loop. That concludes the monthly report.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're going to go on to regular agenda, item number three, discussion request for a route change bus stop at the new Civic Center Building at 18505 Portland Avenue. And that'll be Tom Mills from Trimat. And we had a lot of discussion about this. Thanks for being here to discuss this.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Tom Mills. I am the manager of service planning and development at Trimat. And I'm here to talk about bus line 34 and your new Civic Center City Hall development that will be happening. You mentioned the address. I don't remember the exact address, but along Portland Avenue near Glen Echo. This, I don't recall who reached out to me, but it was brought to my.
We.
Okay, thank you. It was sent to me early in the summer, and we had some email interaction. And I was asked to come to the meeting. I know you've all had an opportunity to get this map. And on the back of the map, there is some statistics here. So if we were to serve the new Civic Center with the bus, it would require a route change to the existing bus, routing the bus off southeast Abernathy to Glen Echo. And that's never something we do lightly, because we do have existing customers, though there may not be many, there are existing customers on Abernathy and they're, you know, they may have, this may be their only means of transportation. So typically, in this kind of scenario, we would do outreach to those customers if we were to agree that we wanted to go ahead and reroute the bus. However, so as you see in the statistics, there are about 21 ons and offs per day, four lift deployments per month. That is the deployment of the ramp on the bus to help people with mobility devices get on the vehicle. Now you can see where City Hall is located. There's quite a few more ons and offs and lift deployments. Of course, we don't know that all those folks are going to City Hall. Certainly, a good portion of them are coming to the commercial area of downtown Gladstone and may still be riding to that location whether we route, reroute the bus or not. However, there is, you know, City Hall is likely to be a destination for some folks, and it's very possible that we would get more rides by routing the bus to the new Civic Center. And the number of riders who would be impacted by the route change is relatively small. You see on the map, I guess I can use this here, you can see on the map, the, most of the riders are here at Abernathy and Portland. Certainly, we could potentially have stops on Portland, and so those folks riding to that location would still have access. Likewise, I don't know how well this works, but.
You can go up there if you want.
Oh, sure. Well, at Glen Echo and Abernathy, we could potentially have bus stops on Glen Echo, and those folks, it would not be probably too burdensome. So really, you're talking about four folks a day who would have a longer walk. So it's not a tremendous amount. However, we do have a few other concerns. Obviously, anytime you make the route longer, that has an impact on travel time for our riders who are riding through. I don't think this would be tremendously longer, but there might be some riders who feel like they're already at riding too long. So there's, that's something to think about for us. And then some issues I wanted to raise to your attention. You'll see where I've marked in kind of an orange box up there, along Glen Echo between Abernathy and Addy Road. The pavement in that area looks like a bus could do quite a bit of damage to it. It looks like it's, and maybe that's already in your plans for upgrading. The other issue I raised is a lack of sidewalks. Now, Trimat has bus stops in the region that don't have sidewalks. Those bus stops are not accessible for people with mobility devices. Our general manager recently set out a new goal and policy to try to make all our bus stops ADA accessible. That is a long-term goal. It's going to take us years to get to that point. But as a result, we are not looking to add bus stops, that, add even more bus stops that are not accessible to people in mobility devices. So if there are no sidewalks there, then we are not inclined to move the route without sidewalks. Now, I would imagine with the new Civic Center, that there will be sidewalks on that side of the street. I'm not sure if there would be sidewalks on the, I guess what I would call the east side of the street. And I don't know if that is planned in the future. Also, we have some concerns about Glen Echo. It does appear that there are some vacant lots and an area there that looks like it's probably a wetland. Now, of course, it probably wouldn't matter that there are no sidewalks going through a wetland, because there's nobody to pick up. However, it does concern us that we would be moving from an area where we have development and traveling through an area where we don't have development. So those are some concerns we have, the biggest being the lack of sidewalk along some of this reroute area.
How many stops would you envision along the proposed route that doesn't have sidewalks?
Um, well, let me, let me, let me go up to the.
So certainly you'd want to have, so if you have stops here at the new Civic Center, you would want to have an opposing stop going in the other direction. You know, potentially you could have a stop here, although that's probably pretty close. So then your next stop maybe might be in this area here. So really, you know, one and then two, three. I don't recall if there's sidewalk on, no sidewalk on either side. So that would be two, three stops that would be inaccessible. I mean, I guess maybe you could put a stop over here, which I believe does, on this side of the, on this side of the intersection. So maybe you, if you have sidewalk there.
Yeah, Addy going north, there's sidewalk.
But on Glen Echo, west of Addy, there's sidewalk?
No.
Oh, no sidewalk. So we want to have at least a pair in this stretch here, and then you would need one going the other direction there.
With this proposal, would you also envision putting another one at the high school?
Yeah, I would think for sure. If we were on Portland here, we would definitely want a stop beside the high school. There is sidewalk, and it looks like it's wide enough outside. I think it's on both sides.
So, a question. So like the high school, in my mind, you know, just getting closer to the community center would be a plus for some people. Still a bit of a walk from the high school, but there's a good turnaround there in the high school that, you know, you could drop and pick up right in front of the high school there even. Just going through the parking lot, it's a pretty wide road there.
Oh.
Instead of doing a whole route change, just go down Portland Avenue a little bit and have a stop right at the front of the high school.
Around.
And then turn back around and go back down Addy.
Yeah.
And then you wouldn't have to change your route, except to add one stop at the high school.
Yeah.
Good idea.
We would not be inclined to do that. That's a deviation. So, you know, we have to, I mean, while it serves the high school, we do have to think about our customers who are on board. And that, you know, I think we can all agree that if you're riding through, that would be inconvenient. What we do find with high schools is that surprisingly, we don't get a lot of rides at a high school. Well, maybe it's not surprising, because students have school bus transportation, which is free. And they would have to pay for bus transportation with us. So they would choose to typically choose to ride if they're going to ride.
So do you know anything about Oregon City High Schools, if they have ridership at all?
Well, so the city of Oregon, are you referring to the high school?
Yeah, well, see, with Gladstone, they're trying to get more students at Gladstone. So if you lived in Oregon City, for instance, you could go to Gladstone High.
Okay.
And so, you know, I know a couple of kids that did live in Oregon City and chose for one reason or another to go to Gladstone. They had to take the city bus. They didn't like the walk. It's amazing, you know, when you're 17, that you can't walk a few feet from the drop over here at the senior center to the high school, but they acted like it was a big deal to go that far, right?
Yeah. So I wasn't aware about the capability, the reciprocity between Gladstone and Oregon City. So I wasn't aware that students were riding. And so do I understand then that the school district does not provide school bus service from Oregon City to Gladstone?
No, of course not. They could only, you know, they have a hard enough time just keeping up with Gladstone, let alone going any farther.
Okay.
And then Jennings Lodge, same thing. They can go, you know, from there, but there's no bus service unless they, you know.
Because there are some students.
No public service that's free anyway, I should say.
Um, because I, I hear also that there's residents over in unincorporated, whether it's Jennings Lodge or Grove, that would normally go to Rex Pudman, and they have a choice to come here if they want.
Okay.
So, and again, because they're outside of our boundary, they would have to either be dropped off or take public transportation.
Right.
So with the Civic Center stop, would the buses be running late enough that citizens could ride it to planning and city council meetings?
So currently, I don't believe we do run late enough to, you know, you might be able to get here, but you can't get back on this particular line. The other lines that come through Gladstone do run later. These lines have a shorter span of service.
What's his last time that it comes through Gladstone?
I was just looking at it, the last departures are between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. So.
Good to be honest.
The last departure is really those kind of commuter, nine to five, I understand, commuters who are, who are trying to get home. So we don't run much later than that.
That, that is the area that I am most concerned with, is we want to make sure that the, the citizens are able to get to the meetings that might impact them.
Okay.
And these meetings, both city council and Planning Commission, are generally around 6:30 at night.
Okay.
It would be ideal if people could use public transportation to get to those meetings.
Sure.
But of course, there is an issue of ridership, and as you can see, the room isn't exactly packed tonight.
Not tonight, yeah.
We didn't have to have a fire marshal, you know, counting heads or anything, although there are times when it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Depending on what's on the agenda. But I understand about ridership, because the bus goes right in front of my house, and you know, there's sometimes nobody on there or one person, and you know, it costs money to run the bus that we're all paying for, so.
It is a, it is a challenge that we are constantly, you know, struggling with, this balance between the demand for the service and how much supply to put out. You know, we want to get the service out to as many people as possible, but we also want it to be used. And so, you know, where is that, where is that right sweet spot? Certainly, if we put out more service, we will get more riders, but will it be enough to justify the cost of putting out more service? Line 34 is the River Road line, so it, after, you know, crossing McLaughlin here, it takes River Road up through Milwaukee. And then it actually cuts up to Johnson Creek, and it goes up by the, excuse me, it goes up by the Tacoma Park and Ride or the Tacoma Station.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And then, I guess I should know this off the top of my head, I believe it goes to Clackmistown Center. So there definitely are some destinations, but a lot of that is kind of residential. On the River Road side, it doesn't take, on the west side of the road, you just have a couple properties, and then you're at the river. So that kind of restricts the number of people who could ride the bus, because there's just not more development west. So, you know, some of those constraints like that are what winds up kind of depressing ridership to some extent, and then making it more difficult for us to.
Speaking of, for this particular use case, even if it was just the second and third Tuesday nights, just those two nights per month, would be helpful.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because those are, those are the city council and Planning Commission nights of each other of the month.
So on River Road, you have those retirement centers and stuff?
Yep.
Do those peo- those people, do they fry the buns?
I think, Willamette, I'm trying to remember the name of the.
Rose Villa and Willamette Manor.
Rose Villa and Willamette Manor, yeah, thank you. There is ridership. It's not gangbusters. You know, those types of facilities usually have their own transportation, typically for outings. They also have their own food, you know, restaurants within them. So, you know, people aren't grocery shopping quite so much, and even if they are, they oftentimes have grocery trips on, with their own public transportation. So it, I certainly understand the challenge of trying to serve, you know, suburban areas with kind of suburban style development, which is a lower density. And, you know, in downtown here, actually, I feel quite good about the amount of service we have here. We have, you know, four, three bus lines that come right through downtown. Besides this, there's, this is line 34. We have line 31, which goes up to Clackmistown Center by way of Webster Road and Thiessen and 82nd. We have line 32, which comes along Oatfield Road. And then over out on McLaughlin, we have line 33. And line 33 comes every 15 minutes all day long. And then the other, all the other three come 30, 35 minutes, every 30, 35 minutes. But this is a bit more of a challenge in this location.
Okay.
Do you, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but when the line that comes up from Oregon City, if I remember it, it comes to Portland Avenue, and then it turns east and ultimately goes up Oatfield.
Yeah, that's line 32.
Are we, is it taking Dartmouth, do you know, or?
It is, um.
Is there any way?
Yes, it's taking, it takes Dartmouth.
It could go farther north before it takes an eastward turn and get us partway here without reinventing everything. Don't answer me now, just a thought, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll go out afterwards and, no.
Yeah, we can take a look at it.
But you seriously have to look at it, but you understand I'm saying, if, I don't want to get too far off this discussion, but I'm just thinking that might be a way to jog that line. We had quite a discussion over this because of library siting and things, so you get to know the bus line, whether you're riding it or not.
Sure. I, yeah, you know, when I think about it a little bit, line 32 oatmeal, Oatfield, and line 31 Webster Road, that travels on, Webster Road line travels on Oatfield for a little bit, so there. Road line travels on Oatfield for a little bit. So there may be some duplication of service and if it's possible to have one go up and then cut over, maybe. I'd have to take a look at that.
And ultimately, geographically, it's constrained because if we were to conveniently go down and, and just turn up, you know, your, your, the distance between Portland and Oatfield at some places is pretty restricted. But just something I appreciate if you'd let's look at.
Sure.
We'll get back to this one for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, that might be the solution for all of this.
Even if we had just the final destination, as I'm looking at this map, cause it comes down Portland Avenue and then turns right on Abernathy, if it went down to at least where the Civic Center was, turn on Dunaway and turn around and go back down and then go back on the main. Do you see what I'm saying?
Uh, could you repeat that, please?
Coming down Portland Avenue instead of turning left onto Abernathy.
You're going north on Portland.
Yeah. Continue to go down past the high school down to where the Civic Center is. There's Dunaway there.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a nice parking lot. They could go in, turn around, come right back down on Portland Avenue and get back on their, their path.
Uh, yeah, that would, I mean, if we're gonna go all the way to Dunaway, we might as well continue on up to Glen Echo and come down because I'd be concerned about taking people, you know, who are traveling through that far out of direction.
Actually, it's not that far. Is it a quarter of a mile even?
Yeah. There's just-
It's not far.
People's perspective, like they know, like, we're going that way and we're gonna come back.
Yeah, and then go back, yeah, okay.
Psychologically, it's kinda like, what are we doing?
Kinda like, um, you know, flying to California, but having to go to Phoenix first.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
We've all been there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Any more questions or comments?
Um, yeah, so, um, for the orange box.
Yes.
So your primary concern there is about road quality in that location, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so for that one, we'd want to reach out to Public Works to get their opinion on that road.
It's pretty, it's pretty br- I walk that, me and my wife walk that almost every night. And we avoid-
Thought it was all over the place.
We gre- avoid Glen Echo because there's no sidewalks. It's tight. People drive fast down there and people park all along the roads, so.
Not easy to navigate.
Uh, it's, that, in the or- like, in the orange, yes, it's, it's all, it's po-ly, it's-
But Public Works has got some plan as far as what roads they're upgrading and when.
Sure.
So we'd need to talk to Public Works about that road specifically.
Yep, yep. I agree.
Well, and to build a crossing at that wetland to upgrade it is in the seven million dollar range.
Yeah.
And that's the ultimate plan. So, not that we don't care if you crack the pavement worse, but no matter what we do, it's, it's a little problematic there. But there's, it's, it's more the matter of where, if you had reasonable access at Addy or places where you were stopping and reasonable sidewalks, then some of these other things, I think, don't matter so much. But we've got some obstructions. Um, Gladstone's got a few haphazard spots. You'll come to find out.
Besides that, there's nobody that's gonna get on that bus between Portland Avenue and Abernathy on Glen Echo. There just isn't anybody there. There's a-
Yeah.
Couple of duplexes down there and that's it.
Yeah, there's nothing else.
And then, yeah, you get up to Addy and somebody might, but that's clear up past the wetland.
Yeah.
But even then.
Anyway.
Yeah.
There's nothing down there.
I mean, if we were to pursue this, we would have an outreach to the neighborhood and, and our existing riders to get their opinions on it. Um, you know, they themselves, folks on Glen Echo may say, we don't want a bus on here. Folks on Abernathy might say, don't take away our bus. Um, or sometimes we hear nothing from folks. Um, so, um, so if we get to that point where, you know, there, there's the access, uh, and, you know, we think, well, maybe we can make this change, um, then we'll, we'll do an outreach to the community.
What's the, uh, what's the policy about going through neighborhoods? Like on a, does it have to have like a divider? Like what's the, the standard?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, um, we, uh, kind of the lowest level street that we will be on is, is a collector's street. Um, so sometimes you'll still have the, the double yellow striping on, on a collector's street. Um, we do not want to be on kind of small residential streets. Um, they're hard for us to navigate. Um, and the folks living on those streets really don't want us there.
True.
Uh, we just, we shake the houses. We make too much noise. Uh, people don't want the bus stops in front of their house, kinda thing, so.
Um, I think we talked about this in email, but, uh, would it be possible for the Civic Center one to be a covered bus stop?
Yeah, so, um, a bus shelter is what you're referring to. And, um, that really would depend on, on ridership. Uh, so we would wanna probably run the service and see how many folks we get per day. Um, we have a, a threshold of fifty boardings, uh, per day, uh, per weekday on average, as being that threshold where we, something, where a bus stop would be eligible for a shelter. The bus stop would also, the sidewalk would also have to be a little bit wider than, than most other sidewalk in order to accommodate the, the bus shelter and still have, uh, the, the kind of walkthrough area.
And that's kinda why I was asking, is I was thinking that if we wanted it to be ADA and be a shelter, it's better for them to do that now before-
Yeah.
The buildings are all done?
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely. I mean, we can certainly, uh, I can have our bus stops folks, uh, work with your folks who are, uh, working on drawings, um, and make sure that the plans are, can accommodate a bus shelter.
You guys have like typical details that someone could just grab off your website that just kinda gives-
Not off the website, but, uh, we can give you the dimensions that, that we, I'd have my folks reach out to you and, and give you the dimensions that you need.
Yeah, it might be practical for the city to look at, for lack of a better word, providing a little easement or something even that might help.
Sure.
Because in the future, you know, we're gonna have people there where it's just inevitable.
Yeah. A lot of times, it's just, uh, you know, you have your sidewalk and maybe it's only six feet wide. And it's just a matter of putting a, a concrete pad-
Right.
Adjacent to the sidewalk where we can mount the shelter. And then, and, you know, you don't have to redo all the sidewalk. And so if the city owns the property, then it's a lot easier, uh, than asking a private property to donate that piece of property for the concrete pad.
One last, uh, aspect of this, there, there's actually two buildings going in. We're going to have a police station.
Okay.
And, uh, we, we also have court. And having folks being, a lot of times, they're having problems with their driver's licenses and they need-
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
-public transportation. So, thinking down the road, since this building is not, the buildings aren't done, um, even if we don't get too much traction on this now, we'll come knocking on your doors. We get a little closer and-
Sure.
And come back and pay us a visit and maybe we can get something.
And what is the opening date?
Actually, Tammy, if you would?
It's, um, May of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Somewhere in that neighborhood or, or later spring.
Okay.
Late May before early May.
Before summer.
Yeah, it's a big project, but it's, it's moving along.
Yeah. Great.
And right now, you know, we've got try to met to the current facility.
Yeah.
But we were concerned that they're gonna, you know, residents were gonna lose that capability once we relocated.
Yep.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll continue this conversation. Sure.
And can, uh, can we follow up with Public Works, um, to find out about feasibility of that one orange section?
Line that comes down with that wetland.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else we need to, um, be checking in on?
I don't know, is there?
I think it's different now, right?
As far as I know. All right. Um, I think we're ready for the public hearing. Public hearing, uh, should I open it now? I forget. We're opening the public hearing for, uh, file number Z zero three one one dash one nine D. Design review for conversion of an existing sixteen hundred ninety-nine square foot residential structure to a mixed use building with one apartment unit, two office spaces, one leasable commercial space. No additions to the existing structure are proposed. Only internal, external remodeling of the site improvements, including landscaping. And that'll be Daryl McKay. Um, I have to read this about, uh, quasi judicial land use hearings, uh, which I read the first part. And what, the meeting will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony. And time will be limited as follows. Uh, applicants, we don't really have a set time. Persons in favor of the application, uh, which would be the public for the most part, for, uh, three minutes each. And you do need to have a card if you wanna testify, fill it out so that we can notify you, et cetera. Persons in favor of the application, persons opposed to applications, and rebuttal from the applicants. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. And final comments by the staff. After that, questions of the staff, if any, by the commission. Then the commission will discuss and deliberate. A decision, excuse me, a decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. Any party, and a party is anyone who testifies or has submitted material, may request the continuance of this hearing or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date that you will receive. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone. When you come forward, please at least state your name for the record and we- Do the cards have the address on them or not?
Thank you.
So we have your address on the card. If you don't wanna have your address on the public record, the recording that's being made of this proceeding. In making a decision, the commission may consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria of the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in this room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria that you believe apply to the decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the city council or the land use board of appeals. And thus, the commission is making a recommendation to the city council, and tonight we are not. The decision will be final unless it's appealed. The commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless it is appealed to the city council. An appeal must be filed within fifteen days and in accordance with chapter seventeen point nine two of the Gladstone municipal code. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit courts. So if it got to that point, after all the other stuff, at this time, I'd like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please state if you've visited the site. We'll just start at the end and work our way to the other end.
I have not visited the site and I do not have any, uh, conflicts of interest.
I've visited the site. No conflicts.
I have visited the site. I have no conflict.
And I have visited the site and if we, you know, looked out the front door, we'd see it. And, um, I have no bias or any conflicts of interest either.
Yeah, I, I also have visited the site and have no conflicts and haven't had any contacts with anyone.
I have no conflicts, uh, about the site and I have visited it twice.
Twice?
Twice.
That's a lot.
I parked right in front of it tonight as I took another look.
Once at the car show.
Yeah, I saw it at the car show too. So that's a lot. Uh, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Any member of the public, I should say, and so the audience, does any member of the public wish to challenge any planning commission members' ability to participate? Hearing done, the staff will now present the staff report.
Thank you. So today, you're considering design review application number Z zero three one one dash nineteen dash D. Do you do that or do I? You did. Fine. Okay, I'm trying to- There we go. So there's an overview. As Randy said, it's across the street. Um, the proposed project would convert the existing duplex into a mixed use commercial and residential building. The applicant has explained that the owner is not yet sure what commercial or office tenants would occupy the available spaces within the converted building. The subject point one one acre property, just about five thousand square feet, is zone community commercial and has historically been developed and used for commercial business operations starting in the nineteen eighties. However, since the nineteen nineties, the structure has been continuously used for residential purposes. The subject site's located on the west side of Portland Ave, directly adjacent to the flying gasoline service station. Public noticing was sent out, um, prior to this planning commission hearing, um, as the code requires to property owners and city staff members and any interested agencies. I don't think for this one, we included, um, for instance, DSL. There's no environmental overlays. And it's not a county road on this section of Portland, so we didn't, we're not required to notice, um, county transportation either. No formal comments were received. The C two zoning district implements a maximum height of thirty-five feet. The existing building is nineteen feet, six inches tall, so well below the max height requirement or standard. Additionally, the C two zoning district allows for a zero front, side yard, and rear yard setback, except when a property fronts Portland Ave, in which case the building cannot be set back more than five feet. The existing building appears to be constructed right on the property line, abutting the public sidewalk. As such, the existing building meets all dimensional standards of the C two district and no modifications would be proposed to the current setbacks. In order to ensure that the future office and commercial uses remain in the scope of the allowable uses of the C two district in title seventeen, special condition number two is recommended to limit future building occupants to only those uses allowed outright in the C two zoning district. The proposed building conversion would be compatible with the surrounding commercial uses along Portland Ave. There's commercial properties on either side of the existing site. The project does not involve construction of a new building and will retain the existing building footprint and height. The proposed facade upgrades, lighting, screening, trash, and general building improvements meet the criteria of the city's section seventeen point four four Building and Siting Design Standards. When an existing residence along Portland Ave is proposed to be converted to commercial or mixed use development, the C two zoning district specifies that additional off-street parking shall not be required as long as A through D above on the screen of section seventeen point one eight point oh seven oh are met. Planning staff finds that the proposed development meets these criteria, A through D above, and that no additional parking is required by the change of use. Specifically, the building will not exceed a B occupancy rating, so standard A above is met. The applicant has submitted evidence to that effect in writing. No specific signs are proposed currently. Since the new business and office uses remain unknown, however, special condition number one is proposed to ensure that any future signs on site meet the requirements of standard B above. In order to find that the proposed project was consistent with standard C regarding traffic- In order to find that the proposed project was consistent with standard C regarding traffic impacts, generation, traffic volumes, and street parking, city staff required a trip generation analysis. The results indicated relatively low volumes of traffic and fell far below the municipal code's threshold for requiring a traffic impact analysis. As such, no significant traffic impacts or parking needs are anticipated from the proposed project, and based on the submitted trip generation analysis, planning staff have determined that the proposed project meets the criteria of C above. Finally, in regards to D above, the proposed building will retain a residential appearance as discussed in the findings and will incorporate concurrent landscape designs. The proposed landscaping will result in approximately 39% coverage of the about 5,000 square foot lot, greatly exceeding the 15% landscape coverage requirement of section, code Section 17.46.020, number one. However, the proposed landscaping plan does not include a commitment for continuous landscape maintenance as required by the code, so special condition of approval number three is recommended to ensure compliance with this section. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed project with five standard conditions and 10 special conditions of approval as shown on the screen and in the staff report. Public Works has submitted preliminary comments in conjunction with city engineering. The applicant is aware of those extra requirements, and there's a condition of approval stating that they need to comply with those requirements prior to building permit issuance. We have attached a trash condition requiring the applicant to indicate their franchise hauler prior to building permit issuance, and I think we already went over the other conditions in our previous parts of our presentation. If you have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer and provide more information.
Regarding the trip generation, while I appreciate that it was provided, I am curious how representative it is when we don't know the business type.
So I was concerned about that myself. So there are specific uses allowed outright in the C2 zoning district. We've limited the project to only be able to allow occupants of those types of uses. So we asked the applicant to do their trip generation analysis based on the highest potential trip generation use, if that makes sense. So the number of trips estimated, I think it was four, was based on that highest potential use of those commercial or office spaces.
Plus, I have a question. If you go to, in your presentation to page 4-6, down toward the bottom, there's a paragraph that talks about dimensional standards and required setbacks. I wonder if taken into consideration has been the redevelopment of Portland Avenue, which my understanding is going to change its configuration and how that would affect the setback requirement.
Yeah, so are you talking about in the context of the downtown revitalization plan? So I addressed that in the beginning of the staff report. I thought that that might be a question. You'll see on 4-1, the staff report says, "The subject stretch of Portland Ave is the city's commercial downtown core and is part of a long-range planning effort intended to improve and reinvigorate businesses and public use on Portland Ave. We make a finding that the proposed project's in keeping with the intent of the revitalization plan. However, the revitalization plan is not a legal standard of review." So there is another spot, and I'll find it. Page 4-5, at the bottom. Ordinance 1486 adopted goals from the downtown revitalization plan to the comprehensive plan, but it did not include any implementing policies or changes to the city zoning title. It was also adopted as a guidance document. So we cannot use anything in the city's downtown revitalization plan, unfortunately, as a legal standard of review for this project.
I have a couple.
I was just saying, no matter what we do, the reality is that this is sitting right on the property line, the good old days, and that's literally not some...
Right on the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, and it is what it is, so it's a constraint, and we just have to deal with it.
Right, and this has come up before, and I think we've talked quite a while ago. But there are some great streetscape plans and ideas in the downtown revitalization plan that would be, you know, be wonderful if we could start implementing those. However, legally, we're not able to at this point until the city adopts that as part of the zoning title. It's just guidance.
That's not the only property like that either.
I do have another question on parking. It's always on parking.
Yep.
You're going to have four doors on this building. You're going to have an apartment, and then two retail spaces, and then another leasable. Just an assumption that each of the people that are going to be operating whatever enterprises that they're going to handle out of these rental spaces are probably going to have to come to work and then go home.
Right.
So there's three or four vehicles there. Let's say it's a small insurance office, CPA, psychologist, whatever ends up in there. They often have an administrative, somebody helping them also. So you are going to have a vehicle who require parking, just based, if nobody ever shows up, you're going to, as a customer, there's required parking there.
Right.
I think I'm probably speaking just slightly for Commissioner Poole here. We're going to end up with cars parked in neighborhoods because of these businesses, and it'll generate complaints. And the idea that we never need off-street parking for anything anymore simply doesn't seem to match reality for me.
Right, and that's part of the reason we brought this to a design review, is because these standards are subjective, numbers C, letter C, and D above. So staff has made a recommendation to you, but it doesn't mean that you can't have a discussion about whether or not, you know, you agree with staff's recommendation or would like to change it. Yep.
Everybody open the public hearing testimony. Testimony for the public hearing is now open. The applicant, or applicants, may now present testimony and arguments. State your names for the record, please.
I'm Darrell McKay. I'm the, one of the owners, my wife's the other one.
And I'm Todd Island with Island Architects, 1307 Seventh Street, Oregon City. We're not really proposing any changes to the structure. It's a very unique structure. It's, it looks very residential as it is now. Based on walking through the structure and seeing how it was built, it appears to be built around 1900, and it was probably a livery stable or something like that. Not typical residential construction. As far as we know, it was used in a commercial use previously. It was a dental office, and I don't know what else.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I've ever heard is, is the dental office. And there's still evidence of that with plugs in the floor for the, you know, the chairs and the...
So what we're looking at doing is making the front half of the building, and it's a very small building. Darrell owns the gas station building next door as well. So he just wants to kind of continue the hometown Main Street appearance. So we're going to clean it up, put new windows and doors in on the front, wall in the windows on the right side of the building, which needs to be a firewall for safety reasons. Two small offices are very small. I mean, they could accommodate two people possibly if they like each other. But they're set up to be one-person offices. And parking on the street should be sufficient for this use. It's not ideal, and hopefully people are not spilling over into the neighborhood, but there is adequate parking fronting the site to serve the residents. There are two parking spaces alongside the building that will be used for the tenant back there primarily. I don't know how that'll work out with the tenants, and it's yet to be determined. We did look very briefly at what it would take to pave more and create more parking in the back. We would lose an entire landscape area, and we'd gain two parking spaces, which I think for the trade-off, you know, it's really not worth it. We'd lose all that landscaping.
The proposed parking for the two vehicles that you mentioned, would that area, I don't believe it's paved now.
No.
Is it planned to be paved?
If required.
Yeah, my thinking is that at least pave the length of the building.
Right. Which would be your parking for your two tenants.
Yeah.
Well, it's one tenant.
One tenant. And then the ADA ramp, that would make the ADA ramp accept, more accessible if it's paved, of course. So that's one reason to have to pave it.
The LED wall pack light, it stated that they were downlights. Looking at this picture, it doesn't appear that they are. Do you have any clarification on that?
Those are along the side of the building for security, and they are focused down. They're not...
They're not going to shine out, then?
No, they're not going to be up for shining. They comply with the night sky, dark sky standard.
They would be on the side that you had proposed being where the ramp's going to be?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
One on the side and one at the rear of the building, actually, and they would be on a motion sensor for security. Have any other questions? Be happy to respond to them.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
So the next thing would be, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? And since you're the only ones here, Tom, do you want to speak? No. Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Does anyone want to provide neutral testimony? Does applicant wish to provide rebuttal? There is no testimony, so no rebuttal. Does the staff have anything to add or recap?
No, thank you.
Okay. Does any member of the commission have any other questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? If there are no further questions, then we will vote to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Does anyone have any further questions?
Other than I, I'm pretty sure you'll make it look as nice as you did the gas station.
Yes.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
So let's...
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Malachi.
I second.
And Commissioner Smith, Natalie Smith. Public portion of testimony is now closed. Deliberation. Questions of staff. Further questions of staff from the commission?
I have none.
End discussion and deliberation. Does anybody want to discuss or deliberate?
I have nothing to deliberate.
So there's conditions and special conditions.
Yep.
If somebody wanted to make a motion now, and no one does have anything to add or, or statements or speeches or anything they want to make, then if we're all on board with the standard and special conditions is outlined in the staff report, we could make a motion to include all those five standard conditions and the 10 special conditions.
I do have one question, perhaps for staff, and it relates to what the property owner said about the ADA ramp and needing pavement, and as of now, pavement's not required. Is that correct? Do we need to do anything about that?
So usually, that's reviewed by our building code department. There's a special condition there that requires them to comply with those standards.
Good enough, thank you very much.
Good question, that too, by the way.
I think we're talking about that space right there that currently has like gravel and grass on it.
Yes.
Okay. So who wants to make the motion? Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve design review Z-0311-19-D
With a second.
With the conditions and special conditions as outlined in the planning report.
My second.
Commissioner Malachi and Commissioner Pat Smith, please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Les Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rowlett?
Yes. Thank you, and there's a standard waiting period of...
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days for appeals, and I think that's highly unlikely since you're the only ones here.
Nobody, nobody can appeal.
And so you were on the corner of Portland Avenue before, Ann Clarendon, right? Your engineering firm?
No.
No? Okay.
You've been in Oregon City for 27 years.
Okay, I know I've seen you before, but I was thinking maybe it was...
We worked together, we worked, you and I, I think.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So I guess the next is business from home.
And next is business from the audience. Audience or the public.
Ambassador Mercerow, anything? Nope, okay.
And there's information only update on changes to the extension compliance time limits in the Gladstone Municipal Code. Who's doing that?
I, I am, but before we get there, I wanted to let commissioners know regarding the bus stop and the issue along Glen Echo Avenue, I wanted to let you know, part of that is within city limits and part of it is not in city limits. So let me bring that up, and I'll show you. That creates an issue.
Glen Echo's the line.
So Glen Echo is then a partially city street and partially county road.
Correct. So we would have to get clarification. This red line here, I don't know if you can see?
Yeah.
This portion is outside city limits, and then right here on Addy, city limits go right down the middle of the street.
Right.
So I just wanted you to be aware of that, but I will follow up with Public Works.
Where is that in relation to what he was asking?
That, the orange area would be where, from Addy to Abernathy, this area right here.
Green today, right there. Is it inside or outside?
That, it's right down the middle of the city, right down the middle of the street is where, of Glen Echo for that portion, correct?
South side is in Gladstone, north side's out, kind of Jennings.
I figured out how to tell when you're in Gladstone or not. You look at their garbage can, because we had two different services and two different garbage cans.
Yeah.
But like I said, I will follow up with Public Works to get feedback on that.
Thank you.
Good.
And regarding the extension compliance, City Attorney Duffman advises, he's getting text amendments drafted, unfortunately, it's been kind of on a back burner, but he's getting them drafted. We'll get that this week, get it filed with the DLCD, and proceed from there to get the noticing out. It is currently scheduled to be on the October 8th city council agenda for those proposed changes. So that's the update.
All right. All right. Commissioners, do you have business?
I haven't done.
Attended awesome training today. Very beneficial. Learned a lot.
And that's going to be available through the city website?
I'll follow up with our city administrator to see how she would like to proceed.
So that's a reason not to. I would actually recommend that we try to make those documents available to the public, just for transparency purposes.
Like I said, I'll follow up with our city administrator and let you all know, definitely.
The train was very, I thought was one of the best ones I've been to. How much was that for us to go to that?
It was $199 per person.
Okay.
Thank you, the city.
It's a little bit more than what I figured, but, and then, of course, many of us still have to work full-time, myself included. us still have to work full-time, myself included. I tried to get my employer to, to comp me for the hours, and they wouldn't do it. You know, I said I was volunteering. Well, you know, if you're in Moknamah County and you're volunteering for something, in Clackamas County, they could really care less, you know. But Commissioner Langston's employer comped him, and so did Commissioner Smith's employer. No?
No, he just let me, he said, "That's fine, that's, thank you for letting me know," because I told him I was going to attend.
So you, you paid for it, too?
Yep. I'm in the same boat as you.
I think the $199, you know, that the city paid is appreciated, and it was well worth it. I think every commission member, and I asked how often they do those, and they do them twice a year, but I think any new members of the planning commission should definitely go to that training.
Extremely beneficial.
Tom, what do you think? Do you think it was worth 200 bucks for the city to pay for, for that training?
I believe so. I started in the planning commission in 2007, and I hadn't had any training on any of the planning commission. And what I saw as a, would be, would be very beneficial to help steer people in the right direction.
Well, it certainly gives you, they did a really good job of giving an overall view of what the, you know, and it wasn't just geared for the planning commission either. It was, you know...
Yeah, it was, it was awesome training.
But it was something that I think every planning commissioner should go to, and the trainers had exceptional experience and knowledge. It was unbelievable, the amount of experience and knowledge they had. So that's all I have. Les?
Well, I just want to make a quick announcement. That is, several months ago, I started a little Facebook page. It's Gladstone Today. And I'm just putting events and notices and things on there. It's not the gossip page. If it was, I wouldn't be announcing it. But feel free to go in and comment. Today, I put a picture of the city halls and, and police station site on it, and did some things at the, at the community festival. So just doing a little part to get the word out. Things are changing, and it's kind of fun to document it. I mentioned that I, in July, I went around and I took a picture of all the construction going on, and I need to get a thumb drive to all of you, because Mayberry is changing. Thanks.
And how do we find that, again?
It's Gladstone Today on Facebook.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Not a, not a big website, not a big giant business, just a, just a source of information and a little outreach for the community. Yes, I'm the author, so any misprints are on me.
Yeah?
I don't have anything, thank you.
So I actually do have nothing.
Okay, and then I have one other thing after you. Go ahead.
So I actually met up with Robert downstairs, and he helped me get the Outlook app set up and connect it to the city email. So if any of you want to do that, he can help you get that set up, on your phone.
On your phone? Yeah, I don't have mine on my phone.
It's probably using web something, Microsoft.
No, this one's actually using their app rather than the web.
Okay.
But if you, if you want it, Robert helped me get mine set up.
Okay, thank you for that.
I've done it before, it's not that bad, if you know all the names and numbers. I wanted to mention that, as far as missing meetings, there, the limit of meetings that appointed person in the city of Gladstone, or if you're on a commission or whatever, if you're appointed, is four. And basically, there's no unexcused, and anybody that, if I'm wrong, jump right in there, as far as I know, there's no unexcused absence in that, it doesn't matter what the reason is that you're absent, if you're absent four times, you're considered to be resigned from the commission or Traffic Safety Committee, or whatever it is that you're on. Do you think I'm right about that?
Per our, the board's committees and commission's language, that is correct.
So if...
One calendar year.
In the, in a calendar year, from December 31 to January, basically.
Correct.
So if you're in the hospital for six months and you can't make the meetings, that's a good reason to not make them, but nonetheless, for obvious reasons, you're not here, so you're, that's it. So you resign. So, you know, keep track of how many meetings you've missed or when you plan. If you don't want to resign from the commission, make sure that you don't go over, you know, three, because on the fourth one you miss, you're done. That's then. So, anyway, thank you. If somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. Adjourned, thank you.